I want to call the order of the June 9th, 2025 Town Council Meeting. Everybody, please stand up for the pledge. And Chief Rio, would you lead us, please?
I am here to present the Stephen A. Ellis Scholarship Award to Diana Baroso on behalf of the Town Council and the Scholarship Committee. As I mentioned at the High School Award, number of her qualified candidates is exceptional. I am forever impressed with what Adam B. Davis, Harvey Rine, and Diana ultimately posed at the top. In addition to the wonderful accomplishments that I'm going to speak to in proclamation, I also want to add that Farmington Social Justice Club, which is president, recently received the 2025 Challenge Scholarship Award. So I give him back some money to chew his horn a little bit more. And also this year, we were able to increasingly establish 500 $15 in the first time, and that came from the sale of the bricks from the 1920 school of students a little bit more and bringing that $500 current to today's dollars. But without further ado, whereas the Stephen A. Ellis Scholarship was established in 1985 and dedicated to Stephen A. Ellis, served as Town Manager at the Town of Farmington from 1955 to 1985. And whereas the scholarship was established for Farmington residents seeking a college degree in public administration and for public service. And whereas Diana Baroso of Farmington submitted her application to the Stephen A. Ellis Scholarship. And whereas the Stephen A. Ellis Scholarship Committee unanimously chose Diana's application and has approved a scholarship award of $1,500. And whereas Diana volunteered her time to numerous clubs and organizations throughout her tenure at Farmington High School, most notably demonstrating exceptional leadership as the founder and president of the Start With Hello Sandy Hook Promise Club, serving as president and council leader of the Social Justice Club, contributing as a leadership team member for modeling and being selected by the Farmington Board of Education to serve on the community for equity and identity. Whereas Diana Baroso has been honored with memberships to the National Honor Society, National Spanish Honor Society, where she served as president, the National Art Honor Society, and the National Hispanic Recognition Center. And whereas Diana Baroso will be attending the University of Hawaii Island in the fall as she prepares for a future career in international law, as she continues to serve the public through her drive and passion for the greater purpose. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Farmington Town Council commends Diana on her scholarship award and hereby encourages her continued success with her future selves. My next proclamation is for Kathy Greer. I'll read this for you. Whereas throughout a remarkable career that spanned three decades, Kathleen C. Greer has served the Farmington community with dedication, dedication, and passion for the past 16 years as superintendent for Farmington Public Schools. Whereas prior to her service in Farmington, Kathy dedicated 17 years to the Hartford Public Schools as teacher, literary coach, and principal, and later assumed the role of deputy superintendent in the Greenwich Public Schools. And whereas Farmington children leave our schools prepared for the opportunities and challenges of the 21st century with her commitment to excellence, selfless dedication, and her drive. And whereas Kathy's influence has extended beyond our children as she mentored many educators who look to her as a model for problem-solving and educational innovation, continuous professionalism, and provide the necessary resources to ensure the highest quality education achievement. And whereas Kathy has earned numerous educational accolades throughout her career and was honored for her leadership, passion, innovation, adaptability, relentless focus on lifelong learning by being named Connecticut Superintendent of Kathy Greer 2020. And whereas Kathy went with energy and empathy, uplifted others with humor and humility, made it her mission to celebrate and support the others. And whereas through her leadership and drive, Kathy was an essential person in the effort to build our new high school. Her imagination and vision left Farmington with a state-of-the-art high school, positively impacting Farmington families for generations to come. And whereas Kathy has been a true partner to the Town of Farmington, working collaboratively the Town Council, the Town Manager's Office, the Farmington High School Building Committee, the Farmington Police Committee, other town departments to support key initiatives and strengthen the community. And whereas, this might be my favorite part, Kathy has been a true partner. I mean Kathy has been known for her attention to detail in her clothing, her selection of her four-inch heels, which always coordinated her attire, her willingness to experiment with the latest styles, and her ability to influence others through her fashionable choices, leaves a legacy of her stunning fashion. Now, therefore, it be resolved that the Farmington Town Council hereby proclaim our deepest gratitude and honor upon the occasion Kathy's retirement and recognize and commend her for decades of service in education, her invaluable contributions to our schools, and the countless lives she has touched along the way. See you at Farmington, Connecticut, the 30th day of May. I want to applaud Joe Capitaro, Chair of Farmington.
This is a family favorite. I have one other hat, Superintendent of the Year, and now my sons can both get. The readers appreciate this very much. I'll just say a few words of thanks to everyone. It's just been an honor and privilege to be the superintendent of schools here in Farmington. I think I'm most proud of the partnerships we've had. Kathy Blonsky and Kat and I have worked on many different projects together over the years, and Kat Council has always been so supportive of our schools. We truly are partners in everything we do to benefit the children and families of Farmington. I also just wanted to take the opportunity to thank Board of Education, our faculty, staff, administrators, and really the center of our work, our students and families. Again, it's just been a dream to be part of the Farmington schools. And I will look from afar and cheer everyone on from Old Line to the beach.
Good evening. David Kowski, but on Friday, we had a celebration. This next individual is not here, but we had a celebration at First Church of Christ on Main Street. And Ed Clark has been the music director there for 60 years. And it's just quite an accomplishment. Ed has just many talents. And it was a privilege for us to not only celebrate his 60 years with his wife Joan, but also to read the proclamation he presented. So I'm going to read it here tonight. Whereas Edward Clark officially began his tenure at the First Church of Christ on August 1st, 1965, and will retire 60 years later on August 1st, 2025. And whereas his earliest duties in this sacred music ministry included directing the Miss Porter's Girls Choir, the Senior and Children's Choir, and the Boys Handbell Choir. And whereas Edward Clark was instrumental in the church's decision in 1969 to purchase a new two-manual 33-rank whole camp pipe organ, which has since been digitally enhanced and has become the workhorse of his music ministry. And whereas Ed Clark's priority has always been his all-volunteer church choir, continuing challenging his singers in diverse music styles and larger choral works, and facilitating collaborations with other ensembles at various venues. And whereas throughout the years, Edward Clark's projects have ranged from directing musical dramas, accompanying and directing the Farmington Valley Singers, commissioning music from composers, and producing weekly workshop service videos. And whereas an unknown facet of Edward's long tenure is that he maintains a deep knowledge of the church buildings inside and out, including the location of long-forgotten items. And whereas in 2005, Edward Clark undertook a two-year project to curate and typeset a collection of handwritten choral music from the library of Farmington resident Austin F. Williams that is housed at the Stanley Whitman House. And more than 150 years later, those anthems were resurrected by the church choir in a subsequent worship service. Now, therefore, the Farmington Town Council hereby commends Edward Clark for his exceptional achievements on behalf of the First Church of Christ congregation. And we hereby thank him for his immeasurable contribution and unwavering dedication to the careful curating of his consummate organ-playing choral and instrumental music to be the best way of his faith, which supports community. Dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 9th day of June 2025. Joe Capitaro, Chair, Farmington Town Council.
Good evening, all. I'm Brian Connolly, and I have to say I am absolutely proud. Can you read this proclamation for this momentous, truly important celebration in this country's history? And let me begin. Whereas our country is made up of people from every nation on earth who are declared equal, not only in freedom, but also in justice, both of which are essential for a healthy human civilization. And whereas the United States of America, in declaring its independence on July 4th, 1776, proclaimed, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, and among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." And whereas President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863, which holds that all persons held as slaves within a state or designated part of a state shall be then, therefore, forever free, changing the legal status of 3.5 million enslaved people. And whereas on January 31st, 1865, Congress passed the 13th Amendment to the United States Constitution, abolishing slavery throughout the United States and its territories. And whereas the news of freedom disseminated gradually throughout the nation on June 19th, 1865, two months after the official surrender of the Confederacy at Apomattox, 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 sorry, Apomattox. And almost two and one-half years after President Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, Union soldiers arrived in Galveston, Texas, and issued the General Order Number 3, announcing freedom to the last enslaved people in the United States. And whereas June 19th, Juneteenth, is nationally recognized as National Freedom Day, Emancipation Day, Jubilee Day, and Juneteenth Independence Day, the oldest holiday commemorating the abolition of sanctioned slavery in the United States. And whereas on this anniversary each year, our nation celebrates African-American heritage, history, freedom, and culture with events and ceremonies that reflect the power of community, family, art, and tradition in the face of oppression. And whereas the Town of Farmington has joined together with surrounding Farmington Valley towns to provide the annual Juneteenth celebration featuring music, activities, and food on June 14th, 2025 at Sinsbury Meadows Performing Arts Center. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Farmington Town Council encourages the people of Farmington to join in celebrating Juneteenth as a day to honor and reflect on the significance of all African-Americans in the history of the United States, dated this 9th day of June 2025 at Farmington, Connecticut. Joe Capitaro, Chair, Farmington Town Council. Thank you very much.
Good evening, everybody. What a great day to celebrate so many great things. Couple of weeks ago, the Exchange Club of Farmington honored one of our detectives, Alexa Hopkins. And I have a great bio here to read, and I'm going to try to skim it, but I think it does it disservice. But before I go into it, I just want to say that these are the crimes that our police officers investigate. They do their hardest work for our citizens every day. And as a show of support for her and our community, our police officers are here to say, I want to thank each and every one of you. You go out there every day, and you raise the ball, protect our community. You never ask for anything more. You do your job with the highest standards and morals that I've ever imagined. So thank you all for all you do. Alexa was nominated by her peers, and this is what it is. Farmington Police Department is pleased to nominate Detective Alexa Hopkins for Officer of the Year. Alexa first came to the Farmington Police Department on March 23rd, 2018, after being highly recommended from West Heart. She began her career in law enforcement. She had been described as professional, well-respected, and eager to learn. Those traits most definitely contributed to her success in Farmington, as only two years later, she was appointed to the rotating detective and ultimately a detective in 2022 of October. Alexa comes to work each day with enthusiasm and energy. She has driven to excel. She has played an integral role investigating various fraud cases. In fact, home insecurity was so impressive with Alexa's efforts and investigation skills that the recruiter had become a task force officer with them, an honorable role for what she is proud to serve. One significant case she investigated involved an elderly victim in Farmington who was being targeted by a scam in which individuals are convinced their social security, I'm sorry, were able to get their social security numbers to them, which was basically compromised. Sorry about this real there. The suspects manipulated the victims into believing their banks were involved, convincing them to convert the remaining funds into gold or cryptocurrency. Detective Hopkins played an integral role in creating an operation and intercept that the final scheduled exchange involved at the victim's home. The operation led to the identification of a courier involved in the scam, who later was linked to a similar scheme spanning from Florida to Connecticut. Had not only been for Detective Hopkins' investigation, $700,000 would have been deleted from that victim's life savings. Her commitment and expertise in tracking complex fraud cases had a significant impact on preventing financial crimes and protecting vulnerable individuals. She handles all cases impeccably. She recently volunteered for a complex and sensitive case involving an employee from a neighboring jurisdiction who accuses child abuse. That jurisdiction recused themselves for the investigation of one of their own. Knowing that the investigation would be stressful and closely monitored by both departments, she still volunteered. She patiently and thoroughly investigated the allegations and established probable cause to make an arrest. Besides her stellar investigation skills, she is department's EAP coordinator and offers assists with other agencies in dealing with tragic events in the town. She is also the team leader of our crisis negotiated regional team. The several nominations received and fellow officers are highlighted for exceptional investigative skills, strong character, and her unwavering commitment qualities she will undoubtedly carry with her as she continues to serve and inspire throughout her career. Okay, come on up, Alexa. Thank you very much.
You got it, Teddy. Good evening, everyone. I'm incredibly honored and humbled to receive the recognition at City Hall Saturday Night. I want to extend my deepest thanks to the Farmington Exchange Club for this meaningful award and for your continued support of law enforcement and the community. I'd like to thank our Town Manager Kathy Blonsky. Without you, I would not be here today. I'd like to thank the Town Council members for being here and to continue to support law enforcement. To the past Farmington Chiefs, current Director Jim Rio, and Administration, thank you for laying the foundation, setting the standard that we continue to uphold. To my fellow officers, both past and present, thank you for standing alongside me in this profession, the courage, commitment, and integrity I see in the men and women in blue every day are inspiring. To my current boss and my two partners, thank you for supporting me, teaching me, and for the continuous lapse. To my family, thank you. To my husband, thank you for being my rock and my biggest supporter. It looks like the discussion of case law over beer is just really heated up. This honor is not with mine, but truly belongs to everyone who has walked beside me on this journey.
And lastly, it's not on the schedule, but I do want to thank our current Director of Police and former Chief Jim Rio. He came out of retirement to help us out in a pinch. We really appreciate it. I know you took time out for your family, your life, in order to help us out. So thank you very much from the bottom of my heart for all of you and for our community. That's the end of our ceremony of other recognitions. So if anyone wants to come, you're more than welcome to. That's good to go. Appreciate everybody being safe.
Welcome to the Town of Farmington. Public hearing will be held at Monday. Garrett, our Town Planner, is going to give us a short presentation.
Yeah, maybe. Just very quickly, this will be the public hearing for the expansion of the Farmington Historic District. The way the process works is property owners interested in joining the Historic District, contact town staff. The Town Council appoints a study committee, which comprises of that Historic District Commission's members. The report is drafted, submitted to the Town Plan Zoning Commission and State Historic Preservation Council for comment. The State Historic Preservation Council submits comments to the study committee. That was done on March 5th. The study committee then holds a public hearing for inclusion of properties that was held on April 17. Then the final step is the report, map, and reports ordinance revision submitted to Town Council for review. This is the historic district, Farmington Historic District's map. Two properties are supposed to be added. Actually, so next, thank you. This is the new neighborhood. It is One Mountain Spring Road and 729 Farmington Avenue. Both properties are owned by the Farmington Historic District. Farmington Historical Society, I'm sorry. The first property is One Mountain Spring Road. It's known as the Elijah Lewis House, built in 1790, sorry. It's a colonial vile slash federal style, and it's located on the western side of Mountain Spring Road. The second property is 729 Farmington Avenue. It is known as the Mary Barney Carey House. It was built in 1926 in a Tudor style, and it's located on the south side of Farmington Avenue. And just the only action for the council is to amend the boundaries of the Farmington Historic District bound under section 11115 of the Charter, and the list of properties under the date is probably 1 Mountain Spring and 729 Farmington Avenue.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Right now, Garrett, I'm sorry. I'll open up a public comments side of chairs for this. Garrett, please step up to the podium. State your name and address, and I'll find you.
I won't take that one. I'm Jay Bombar up here, Team Mountain Road, Farmington. I have the pleasure, actually the honor, of the town's confidence in me. I'm both Chairman of the Farmington Historic District, which okayed the process and got it rolling, and what constantly the property is put in. But I also am honored by the membership of the Farmington Historical Society, which is the organization putting the properties in. You know, Garrett, I thank Garrett and Sharon Rutherford for the public work they do to do this. We try to keep getting properties. It's worked out very well, as you know, a key part of the town. We're going to preserve the look of it. Obviously, preservation is critical, and I really appreciate all the people that have served in the roles that you guys serve for years, and have built this district out. And we continue to do that, and we're very committed to it. Well, the Farmington Historical Society really looks forward to turning 729 Farmington Avenue into its headquarters and really a public space for those people to come and really enjoy, really be able to promote more of Farmington's history. And you can see from the map that it also abuts the distance. We're really going to protect what we do, so thank you, and I encourage you to approve this.
Anybody else inside would like to make a call? Wes? Wes? Do you see anybody online?
I don't see any yet.
All right. Close off the podium there. Wes, what's that? Have no new idols? Don't want to have? Very popular. If anybody sounded like a mixtape, please step up to the podium. We have five finishes.
Good evening. My name is Mike D'Amico, Six Dever Lane, also the State Representative for the 21st District. I am stepping up here for two reasons tonight. Number one, to offer congratulations, and number two, to offer some information. So the congratulations first. It was really gratifying to see so many people being recognized here today at the Town Council meeting. We are so blessed in this town to have people of such high caliber and dedication to our town. So I really wanted to just congratulate all the honorees Kathy and Ed and Alexa and Diana, and also Mr. Chair, I'm glad that you recognized Jim Rio, Chief Rio as well. So just wanted to offer my congratulations to all of them. The other congratulations that I wanted to point out is for the Steve Grant that was recently awarded to the Town of Farmington. I know the Town Manager is going to talk about it in her report in a few minutes, but it's a million-dollar grant from the state of Connecticut for improvements to the Tungus Need Recreation Area, and it's much needed and well-deserved. And that million dollars will really, really help to spruce up and really make it a much friendlier, user-friendly facility for everybody. So congratulations to the town staff and everybody who worked hard to get that grant. So the information that I wanted to convey is just a short little wrap-up of the legislative session that just ended last week. You know, for the next several days and weeks, people, I'm sure, will be talking about what happened in the legislature and what didn't happen in the legislature. So I don't want to go through all of that. I'll just hit some highlights. We came out with a balanced budget for the next two years, which is good for all of us, not only those of us in Farmington, but throughout the state of Connecticut. We kept intact municipal aid for all the towns and cities who really rely on that municipal aid. We actually increased it in some cases, which I will get to in a minute. So we increased aid to nonprofits. We do a lot of really good work throughout the state of Connecticut. We increased Medicaid funding. Some people will say not enough, and I We increased Medicaid funding. Some people will say not enough, and I think I would agree with them. But it was a significant amount, but unfortunately not enough. We made some changes to the way special education is dealt with here in Connecticut. Number one, we put a lot more money into special education and all that money will go through all the cities and towns in the state. But also, we made a modification to the way that when special ed services are needed, there was outplacements in many cases. Students get outplaced from their home district to special schools, for example. And we made a change and we set up a rate structure so that there'll be a little more, a little more, I don't know what the right word is, a little more transparency and a little more consistency in the way those services are provided. So, it's not a cap on rates that are charged by private schools, but it is going to be a rate structure that will hopefully benefit everyone. So, you know, I could go on and on about what we did, what we didn't do. The one thing I wanted to mention, lastly, for the whole state, you're going to see a slight decrease hopefully in your electric bills because we made a change to the way that some of the public benefits charges are going to be paid for. They're going to be bonded, so they're going to be part of the state budget as opposed to going on your own personal individual electric bill. So, it won't be a huge change, but it will be some welcome relief for everybody in the state of Connecticut. So, again, people have been talking about this for a long time. I wanted to talk about some specific things that really benefited Farmington that happened in the legislation this year. And there are actually three, three in particular. Number one, and probably most importantly, we received an increase in our education cost sharing allocation, ECS money that we get every year from the state of Connecticut. Farmington is fortunate that over the next two fiscal years, we will receive an increase of about two million dollars each year. So, we're going to go from one point seven million in ECS reimbursement to three point seven million. So, it's an extra two million dollars each year for the next two years, which I'm sure has already helped at budget time here in Farmington and will continue to help at budget time. So, that was a big win for Farmington. Another thing that was significant is we made a change to the way that, to the way that air conditioning and HVAC and other things are allocated. Under the current system, the, I want to get this right. Under the current system, the Department of Administrative Services had to approve grants for HVAC improvements and other improvements to schools and other facilities on a case-by-case basis. Well, currently, they set up a priority list and under this new change that we approved, and I'm sure the governor will sign, they're going to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, which will make it easier and more efficient for towns such as Farmington to apply for grants for HVAC. And I know that's something that's coming down the pipe here in Farmington for our schools. So, it'll be easier, more efficient, be evaluated case-by-case. And the other thing that I should point out is that towns get anywhere from a twenty percent to an eighty percent reimbursement. And of course, myself and the other members of our legislative delegation will fight to make sure that we get the upper end rather than the lower end. But again, much of it is determined by formulas. So, but we will fight to make sure that we get much reimbursement for HVAC as we possibly can. So, the final thing that I wanted to mention has to do with something that was requested by the town manager and the assistant town manager. It was to clarify some language that was in last year's budget, having to do with paying for expenses for architectural and other professional services for Farmington High School and for the new board of education office. So, there was some question about whether the language was just right last year. So, we clarified the language to make sure that those expenses for architectural and professional services will be reimbursed to the fullest extent. So, that was a positive thing for Farmington. So, all in all, I think it was pretty good. And as always, if you have any questions, you know how to get in touch with me. And if I don't have the answers for you, I will make sure to get you the answers. But thank you for your patience and your forbearance and keep up the good work.
Very much. Thanks. Anybody else would like to make a call?
Excuse me. Thanks.
Anybody online?
Take a motion to approve events since May thirteenth, one point five, for the town council meeting?
Second?
A motion is set. Any corrections need to be made or additions? All in favor?
Fine.
Closed. Passes. H, Kathy?
In your reading of communications, you have some correspondence from Beth and Ann, our registrar voters. So, there is a packet of information from them. What's happening right now is that they are working with the town attorney on updating the ordinance. Once that is done in July, we're likely to present it. They are going to present it to the county council. And then from there, we are likely to have, going to have to have some additional meetings to have the redistricting ordinance on the November ballot. So, right now, the town attorney is working on the process with the registrars, working on the updated ordinance. And they will be available in July to start this process with the town council.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Report of committees. Nineteen twenty-eight. At our last meeting for the nineteen twenty-eight building, we were able to get a tour and it's pretty incredible to see all the things that are happening. Walls are going up, structures, you can actually see how it's going to lay out. KBE came through in a big way. There was, you know, how the current band room was, how it was steeped down, so it would descend down to a lower level. There was plans about how to re-engineer it, know where to make it flat again, so events could be done to bring back that gymnasium look. They came with the idea of just reporing the cement in the open area, making it one solid surface. And now through that, saved about three weeks on the project for Ed Cap. So, it was a big home run for them to think a little bit outside the box in order to keep this project moving forward as it is. They have done so much work. The first floor flame framing is being done. First floor and second floor coat taping and drywalls on the third floor. The pressure testing inspection of the fire marshal is on the third floor has been completed. Underpinning the concrete placement of the elevator shaft along with footings and the walls, a new addition. Concrete place with a gym floor, which I just talked about. And then backfilling the new addition area footings and piers. Tasks that are now coming up in June are still more drywall, as you expect, the taping. MEPs completing roughens and layouts of the equipment on the first floor, installation of steel columns and beams throughout the building. Miscellaneous concrete fills. The gym piers are going in. The old elevator floor and wall framing is on all of the floors are being done. So, much work is being done. I believe, Cat, we have everything up on our website too, as far as our expenditures. And our next meeting will be June twenty-fourth at four thirty PM in the town council chambers. And we'll move over to the fires, fire station building committee, please.
We met on Tuesday, May eighteen, to review the cost summary from Silver, Chris, and Charles and Associates. We decided to request a new meeting of legislators if there were any available funds for helping with the needs of our higher houses. Cost of repairs meeting has been stationed at three thirty, so we're expecting to keep the low volunteers that we have to keep residents safe and avoid high state highway responses. We met again on Friday, May sixteen, because the house was not in possession, to ask for help with any available funding. We felt this was a very positive meeting. Our next meeting is June seventeenth at nine AM to sit down with Silver and Associates to create the list of things to do first so we don't have to redo anything, really realistic timeline of repair or we do not get any state in any repairs meeting.
Yeah, the only thing I have to add is, if you mean as a great, beautiful report, is that part of that last meeting we had with our state delegation was to kind of look at possibilities of capturing more solutions at these places than what's in that first, the final that's identified. So, the next meeting here is hopefully to really get into the details with the architectural team and really understand maybe some other strategies of how we get there, how we best efficiently get there. Like Eddie said, we don't want to do work, undo work, practice things in the future. So, I think the next meeting will be valuable to hone in on a final number and what that scope of work that will be needed closer to crafting our trajectory.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Sidewalk committee.
Sidewalk committee continues to be busy. We, our most recent meeting, we reviewed essentially the information that we're going to be giving to the public to provide some clarification on what priorities, sorry, what qualifications make you a priority to have a sidewalk in your neighborhood. Things like connection to schools, connection rails to trails, connection to town centers, exactly how to apply for those sidewalks, how funding would be doled out, just to really, so if a group in a neighborhood wanted to go out and get sidewalk in their area, they could really have some hard information about what would make it more advantageous for the town if we were to stay in the area. The, yes, I was going to say, the best, best, best part, we have a sidewalk in town, Eric Turner comes out and he's going to be grading some sidewalks throughout town just to see, we're trying to get a baseline for how much of the town sidewalks are in good repair, okay repair, or really in need of repair. So, I think it would be A, C, F, this is grading scale. A seems like a, I don't know, is that a U P, right? We've already met four times. We've been quite busy. And then we have another meeting scheduled, which is eight after he sends some time with the sidewalks. And we, as I mentioned last time, have a really nice presentation to prepare for the future.
Got it all. It sounds like you sure, Brian?
Oh, I'll speak up. You missed anything?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Farmington High School Building Committee.
First, our most recent meeting was last week. The punch list for the high school is currently ninety-eight percent complete with their items. The central office renovation project is a hundred percent complete with an anticipated TCO to be issued in early June, out of this week. This will serve as the new central office for Farmington Public Schools. The fieldhouse section of the project is ninety-eight percent complete, which in order for the fieldhouse improvements was discussed with work to be completed over the summer. The new tennis courts were installed in April, installation from the light pole bases for the tennis courts progress. And our next meeting will be on Wednesday, June eighteenth, five at five PM in the library of the high school.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to Jay. Report, town chair and liaisons. Have you seen this weather has not been most cooperative with all the rain we've been receiving. Saturday, we finally held our Farmington Folks Live Heart of Law Show on Main Street. I hope everybody was able to get out there and enjoy it. Was it? Oh, it's Sunday. Are you going to move to Sunday? No.
So, don't think it was fabulous, just hype the rain.
Excellent.
The team that's holding together, oh, just great.
That is awesome. I'm glad that everybody got out there and was able to enjoy it.
You're in.
Always there. If you do or do not know, the high school graduation is tomorrow, so you're going to expect a little bit of traffic in Unionville Center when it floods out. But I do want to congratulate all the Farmington High School graduating class. I wish everybody a successful future, you know, whether you are going into the workforce, going into the military, continuing with your education, taking a gap year. You deserved it. I wish you all the best of luck. I hope you go out there to the world, see it, and then you choose to come back to Farmington to make it your home, to raise your family here. Project graduation is obviously that night, and I do wish all the students a safe, safe graduation party. Wednesday is the IER promotion, so we'll be having a little event back at the high school again for the students graduating eighth grade that are coming up to the high school. Thursday is our first summer concert series over at New Horizons, and the band will be Local Motion, so hope to see you guys there and hopefully the weather will cooperate. And as you know, Juneteenth is approaching, so please check your local calendars as far as Explore Farmington to see what events are going on. And obviously, we have tried also to promote one other concert to celebrate. And lastly, like we were discussed earlier for the FLIS scholarship, it is great to know that we have been so successful, 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 geez. And the sale of all the bricks that, you know, we've taken the FLIS scholarship, which has been in place for how many years?
Eighty-five.
Nineteen eighty-five, that we've been handing out money from that, from his money that he donated then to now with such a successful campaign on selling the bricks, we went from five hundred to fifteen hundred dollars with that scholarship. And now to know that future students will have the access to a nice chunk of fifteen hundred bucks to go towards their education. So, great work to everybody and it's been a great thing to report. And we'll move on to the Board of Ed.
Thank you. The Board of Ed, at the last meeting of the year, last week, June third, they honored Farmington High School seniors and honored the superintendent. The discussion really focused on ongoing problems with transportation and trying to work through the concerns that have continued that have been issued throughout, and hoping it gets improved in the fall and holding the, holding specialty speed to the highest. They also approved the renewal of the cafeteria contract and announced that the superintendent search is incomplete, that Kathy Greeter will be staying on. And it's a per diem interim superintendent until a replacement can be hired. The board is committed to finding someone who meets Farmington's excellent expectations. And as I've said before, Kathy Greeter's big shoes, tall shoes to fill. So, they're going to be restarting the process. And then, Joe already said the graduations.
Sorry. Conservation inland wetlands. And I know I won't have anything to say about that, so go ahead.
All right. It's been slow. Conservation inland wetlands, last two meetings were May twenty-first and June fourth. For the most part, with one exception, it's been routine applications, pools, retaining walls, property additions. You live in, just, if you live within a hundred and fifty feet of a wetland, you have to go through the inland wetlands process to make sure that your project isn't going to negatively impact wetlands. So, it's a lot of homes going through that process. The one notable project is that the inland wetlands commission approved the fishing pier that I talked about at the last meeting that Farmington Land Trust has maintained, but has fallen into disrepair recently, especially as we get more rainfall and the Farmington River causes greater erosion and twists and turns. So, for anyone who doesn't know, that fishing pier is located near Railroad Avenue along the Rails to Trails in Unionville. And so, but their next stop is to go through TPT at least.
Make him progress. Thank you.
Oh, their next meeting is June eighth.
Thank you very much. EDC.
The economic development breakfast was held, featuring CBIA CEO Chris Cantina as the speaker. He discussed the Connecticut County and strategies to ensure the sustainability. There are a hundred and thirty people who attended the breakfast, which was paid for by the Bank. Another breakfast will take place in the fall. Trump held a ribbon cutting on May twentieth for the opening of a forty million dollar factory. He also announced that they had increased training program. T E C D also announced Trump was the first company to exceed a brand of two point five million dollars. Supplies chain initiative. There are two projects that will be completed within a month. Arbyton Industrial Center is located at the Scotts Park Road, next to the, the, the screen bench. It's a multi-tenant project with units early set, including garage and office space, looking for. Uh it's a multi-tenant project with units early set including garage and office space looking for the trades and the whole state community and has two new work, high-end apartments with amenities such as pool, community gardens, small dog rooms, community other amenities. And as Joe mentioned, the cultural district, uh live art watch show was held on Saturday.
Thank you. And T P Z, please.
Must be the place we are at, right? We're usually in the town council change, form office. But anyways, T P Z, I would say the biggest thing to report is there's been a text amendment. Um and I talked about this at the last meeting, I didn't talk about it last couple of updates. They're actually having a meeting in uh in council changes right now. They're regular June eighth meeting. Um so that text amendment uh was, you know, scheduled for another continuation of the public hearing to affect about twenty hundred properties in in the central area, near Garden Street, as well as Unionville. Um and that, that has been withdrawn now, so that isn't going further. Um and that, that uh came out, that information came out earlier today. Um and so right now, I would say um there's really not much to report on that outside of that probably was gonna, you know, have some opposition and I think it was, you know, it was, there wasn't any perfect solution there, and I think the trial was probably the best. Best movement was, yeah, uh the rest of it was a regular year there.
Thank you. We'll move on to Kate. Report the Town Manager.
Yeah, I have the, my written report in front of you. We talked about uh Juneteenth already and the summer concert uh series, but I did want to talk about uh Steve Grant that uh uh Mike D'Amico mentioned. So we were awarded a million dollars from the Steve program for Tungstus Speed. It's the largest uh Steve grant that the town has ever received. Um the town plans on um contributing five hundred and two thousand dollars, and that money will be uh basically subsidized using the funds from the recreation fund, thereby reducing the impact on the general fund. Um the project includes six targeted infrastructure projects. It's the replacement of the field lighting, uh re- uh repairs and renovations to the dugout and press box, refurbishing the basketball court, installation of the sidewalks. Um this will help for accessibility, uh replacement of safety netting holes and fencing, and installation of a new sound system. So uh we're really excited about the grant that just came out, and it's a one point five uh million dollars.
Right. Any questions for Kathy?
I would just say that's the, you know, that's just the home run. I mean, I just think the staff, everybody that initiated that is just, uh it's just, Tungstus Speed is so well populated and just one check that all those improvements you talked about are well needed in the sidewalks.
It really, it really needs a facelift and.
It needs a, needs a facelift, too. And I just think.
One of the things that was very helpful is that a few years back, we did like a recreation plan um of all the different things that had to be done in Tungstus Speed, and the state likes it when you have like all the plans and the cost and everything already done. What did we, what did we call it, Kathy? It was a recreation.
Infrastructure report.
Our report. So I think that really helped us with the grant because we have about, believe it or not, like six million dollars worth of work down there, but we were able to do that. Yeah. Yeah. It's a big facility.
Mike, that's where you're hanging around.
But anyway, it's uh, it's the maximum amount that we could get, and uh we're all excited about it. So thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. Right, yeah, yeah. She wrote it like with the help of Kat and probably, was she here like about three weeks?
I don't even think it's. Within the first two weeks, she took the grant.
Actually, I think that's important. I mean, it's a new position.
Right.
It's fine.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
Throw them right in the deep end.
That's how we roll.
Sink or swim.
Yeah.
Motion second, all in favor? Hi, opposed? Motion passes. I don't believe we have any appointments, do we? We have two. Go ahead, Kate.
L eighteen, make a motion that Peter's relatively appointed. Do I have to, uh, morning?
Okay.
Do I just go eighteen, nineteen? Cause I know one's coming off. I could just go. Peter is currently.
Peter to full time and then that'll open up his.
So L nineteen, make a motion that Peter's relatively appointed to the town manager's commission for your term beginning immediately and ending January fifth.
You have a motion of second, and that is for uh Rocha as far as resigned and uh moved to a new home out of state. Any questions? Comments? All in favor? Hi, hi, opposed? Motion passes.
L nineteen, I make a motion that Michael Costa, the appointed as ultimate getting immediately ending January fifth, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah, a motion second, and that is to fill the void that's well. Comments? Questions? All in favor? Hi, opposed? Motion passes. All right, we have nothing for hold business, but we will move on to what everybody is waiting for. And one, please.
And one, I make a motion to amend the Farmington Historic, sorry, the Farmington Town Code, Chapter one eleven Historic Areas. Purpose of adding two historic properties in jurisdiction.
Motion second, Kathy.
As uh the public hearing and Garrett and Jay talked about, it's uh two properties, one Mountain Spring Road and seven twenty-nine Farmington Avenue. All properties are interested in coming into the historic district. As you can see from the report, uh there's quite a bit of work that has to be done to get the properties in. Um and so we thank the group and Garrett and staff for doing it, and uh it's great that we keep on expanding our, our district.
Awesome. Any questions? Thank you for your hard work. I appreciate it. All in favor? Hi, opposed? Motion passes. And two?
And two, I make a motion to authorize the town manager to sign the attached inter-local dispatch agreement between the town of Farmington and the town of.
Motion second, Kathy.
As you may know, um the Connecticut General Statutes authorizes two or more municipalities to enter into an agreement to perform any functions jointly that each municipality may perform separately. Um since two thousand and five, I think most of you know that Farmington has had an interlocal agreement to provide dispatch services for nine-one-one, fire, and EMS for the town of Burlington. Over the last six months, I've been working with the town of Avon to expand our regional public safety answering point, um emergency communication center to provide dispatch services for the uh town of Avon. Um benefits of this agreement um include enhanced level of services to both residents of Farmington and Avon, technology improvements, um enhanced radio system capabilities, state-supported equipment and backup, emergency continuity, emergency, um, what is it? Mobility, financial incentives. So we have increased state subsidies, we have shared costs for future technology, and we have avoid uh duplication of infrastructure. So in the past, Farmington has provided dispatch services for Avon on a tem- on a temporary basis, and it was very successful. Even though Farmington will financially benefit from this agreement, this consolidation effort is also about improving emergency response, increasing safety for our residents and our responders, and preparing for our communication systems uh for the future. This is a standard interlocal agreement that has been modified to meet our needs. The town attorney has reviewed the agreement. Additionally, both uh the Farmington Police and Fire Departments support this expanded regionalization. This is really, really exciting for the town of Farmington by growing our regional dispatch center. Not only do we financially benefit significantly, but we're also able to deliver faster, more reliable, and more coordinated public safety service. We're gonna be a leader in the region. Um they, for the last twenty-five years, people have been trying to regionalize dispatch centers, and there's been a ton of pushback for it, and now we are able to do it. And um like I said, uh it's gonna be great. We're able to bring Avon's the, some of the uh equipment. They're on the state system, which we're not, so that helps us. We also like it because it's our regional dispatch center, so we're the ones that are in charge. Avon is gonna be bringing, we're gonna be taking on at least four of their employees. Um the equipment and the state subsidy is paying for us to update the uh dispatch center. As some of you may know, we recently have done some updates, so really gonna have a state-of-the-art dispatch center, and uh we're really, really thrilled about it. And like I said, it's taken a long time. And the other big advantage is, is that Mike will probably attest to is that the state has been really, really pushing smaller municipalities, and it's not gonna be that long before you're forced to regionalize. And so we're ahead of the curve, and they keep on increasing the subsidy. So even though we've been doing Burlington and we've received a good amount of money by taking on Avon and being, having the three towns, it brings our subsidy up quite a bit. So we are, I think it's a win-win for us. It's a win-win for Avon because Avon is getting, gonna be having a different service. They've been struggling with keeping dispatchers and different things, and um that's why we've been having to, we've taken them on, on the overnights. So they're working through their process right now, but it's been very positive on their side. And uh I think it's, it's really a great thing for the town of Farmington.
Questions?
Um, so I think it all sounds great, Kathy. And I'm a big fan of shared services forever. It makes sense, cost-saving benefits. Uh I just have a question in the, so Avon's responsible for twenty-five percent of total capital plus. Is Farmington doing the other seventy-five percent, or does some of this go with the Burlington agreement, such that Burlington separately pays?
Yeah, Burlington has that too. Yeah, and the future. And then a lot of it also is with the state subsidy too, it helps us too.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I just like to follow up on the same thing, and that makes complete sense. So uh in here under the financial obligations, you know, okay, I'm sorry, we're responsible for the capital cost representation system. Are, are there gonna be initial costs that, that are, that are part of this, this merger?
Yeah, there is initial costs, but the state is paying for those costs.
So that's what you're saying, the state's gonna pick those costs. Okay, that's not a simple one. And then number two, down the road, do we see any reason why there would be additional costs once the mergers, uh that first investment is made that the state has put in place? Do, do, is there something every year that we need to update the technology or?
I think in general, we're always gonna be updating the dispatch center, but we'd be doing that anyway. And so, um but we have just got a massive update to our center. We're bringing over their state system, but I think that eventually we're gonna wanna go on to the state system a little bit differently, and so there's gonna be costs with that, but the, the sub, between the subsidy and any, and Avon's gonna be paying a percentage for that.
Right, no, that makes complete sense. That's very good. And then the last thing is, so Avon right now, I know their town attorney's working with their parties, and it seems like there's no.
Their attorneys have reviewed the agreement and have blessed it too.
How about this three percent increase?
Yeah, for the first five years, yeah.
Any other questions, Brian?
Yeah, I just wanna say thanks for making us a leader in this category here. This is really exciting. I was curious about one thing. I think I read that we're taking on uh you know, four or five of their staff, which is great, and they're paying for half of that staff.
No, no, they're gonna, actually, we, we're obligated to pay, they're gonna pay for four, and it's a cost neutral. So they're paying for the salaries and their benefits and everything that go with the people that they're taking on. And then for the next three, five years, it's three percent increase, and that's how it goes.
So what happens after that?
Well, after that, we'll renegotiate another contract.
Please carry.
Yeah, no, makes sense.
Thanks.
Yeah.
We have a bigger idea.
Yeah. Well, there's a couple of things. So right now, we bring in a subsidy between our Burlington and our, our state subsidy of two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. And now with between our Burlington payment, our new state subsidy, and our Avon payment, we're gonna be bringing in a million dollars. But that said, we're also gonna be paying for our new dispatchers. So the net is about close to, I think, like between about two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, sir. I'm just curious, because we're growing like this, does that put us in a position, if the opportunity was there to grow even harder, to be, to have a little greater reach?
I think we've talked, we've talked about that. I think one of the things that could limit us a little bit is our space. Uh you know, we only, if we grow more, we'd have to bring in more dispatchers, but I think at this point in time, we wanted to try with the three. And again, like I said, is that the state is really pushing for regional dispatching. And so I think that since we're gonna be the hub, it definitely would not be off the table that if we could, you know, we, if it was financially beneficial and we'd still improve our services, we'd continue to look to go further with it.
Anybody else? No? Okay, all in favor? Hi. Opposed? Motion passes.
And three, I make a motion to award a contract for the purchase of two green skimming four-plus mowers and accessories at M T E Equipment Solutions Inc. under Milford, Connecticut at a purchase price of eighty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Motion second, Kathy.
Uh this motion is to uh purchase two new green smowers that will be used at Westwood's Golf Course. Units are being acquired to replace two green smowers that are thirty-five years old. And we have a hundred thousand dollars in the account, so we do have some savings, but you see later on, we need some of those savings to pay for um one of our other items.
Any questions? All in favor? Hi, hi. Opposed? Motion passes.
And four, I make a motion of the following unobligated C I P balance fee transferred to the account listed below this year, twenty-three five, twenty-three six. Apple bunch of photos.
Motion second, Kathy.
As you can see, the green mower, we're gonna be moving nine thousand three hundred into the sprayer, which is the next account. And we have sixty-five thousand dollars in the sprayer account, but it's the sprayer plus. So this is just a transfer between the three accounts.
Any questions?
I have one question now, sorry. Just uh, why was it, why was the estimate off? Like by ten thousand, it seems like it's a little bit. It's like a.
You know, I, yeah, it's a.
Not on our part, on their part. Over here.
Joe? I'm not sure.
We got these tests on the back here. Back in the, it was October of last year, two years ago. We got the first estimate of the spread beginning at sixty-five thousand, well, when we back up, if you actually bust this time around, we had an increase in price. If it gets, gets in six months, the increase in price. Or the offset was that we got the price fifty thousand for the green mower.
I could ask for that.
In less. So, um, sometimes.
No, I just wonder if something changed.
The price is still fluctuating right now. I mean, I've seen a lot of different things that I could see. Some people plan with tariffs, some things, some, you know, some things outside the United States.
Tariffs?
Oh, yeah.
Really? Their impact, possible impact there?
Yeah, oh, we, we see it every day. We get, we get things every day. We, I mean, gas is at a low point, we get a good charge, surcharges on, on bills and on boats. So it's, it's pretty bizarre out there right now.
Well, no Chinese mowers.
These are made in the United States. They're all John Beers and Smithco's, so they're all.
You know, being.
They're all in the United States.
Any other questions? All in favor? Hi, hi. Opposed? Motion passes.
And five, make a motion to award a contract for the purchase of one Smithco Spray Star twelve-hundred D sprayer and accessories, M T E Equipment Solutions Inc. of Connecticut at a purchase price of seventy-four thousand one hundred and fifty.
Motion second.
Again, this is for one new sprayer that will be used as the ground staff for turf maintenance operation. The unit would be uh to replace the sprayer that was thirty-two years old. Um and fifty-five thousand dollars is included, and we just transferred the ten thousand to get, or nine thousand five hundred to get the seventy-four.
Any questions?
I make it to thirty-three years?
No.
So roughly, so thanks for keeping these things on the home.
Yeah.
All in favor? Hi, hi. Opposed? Motion passes.
And six, I make a motion to award a contract at Silicon, Connecticut, to mill reclaim and supply in place for two minutes material on roads for the twenty-twenty-five paving season and the cost not to exceed one point three million dollars.
Second.
Motion second, Kathy.
So this is a contract with the vendor to mill and reclaim um for, in place for the town's twenty-twenty-five street paving program. Fund for this work in the amount of one point four million are available in the capital budget. The amount of one point three is the estimate of the amount of paving work that would be undertaken during this year's paving season, and we went through a co-op bid for this.
Questions? All in favor? Hi, hi. Opposed? Motion passes.
And seven, I make a motion to award a contract for the purchase of one twenty-five Volvo L ninety H two wheel loader, Kyler Equipment Corporation, Burlington, Connecticut, at a purchase price of two hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred dollars.
Second.
Motion second, Kathy.
This motion is to contract with the vendor to purchase a wheel loader that will be used by the highway and grounds uh division for their daily operation, and this is replacing a nineteen ninety-nine loader. Funds in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars were included in the twenty-five, twenty-six capital budget for this acquisition. capital budget for this acquisition. Um the award includes equipment that can be attached to the loader to push and plow snow. And this is uh through a cooperative bid. It just, it's interesting that it is a forty-three point six percent discount. So quite a bit of a discount on his equipment.
Questions? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
And eight, I make a motion to ratify the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the town of Farmington and the border police lodge three hundred and thirty-one for the period of July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Motion second, Kathy.
Uh the, the police union and the town have reached a tentative agreement on, in the collective bargaining agreement. It's a three-year agreement that would end in June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Um some different things that I just wanted to point out is that we did make some enhancements to contractual language for management. Particularly regarding outdated layoff and recall language. You may recall that we've done that in some of the other contracts too. Um one of the big things that we were very interested in is that we did a reduction of the maximum accumulated vacation, holiday and earn time. Employees can carry over from anniversary year to anniversary year for employees hired after July first, twenty twenty-five. This change is to, is anticipated to generate significant long-term cost savings for the town. We also have revisions to the existing sick leave and paternity leave provisions, including the establishment of limits of use of sick time for short-term illnesses affecting uh immediate family members, which we, um it's very good language for the town. Um we do have some uh updates on on-call pay for some different um shift premiums. Um we um increased the health insurance, some of the things that go along with that. And it was three percent for three years, uh three percent, three percent, three percent. I think this is um a fair contract to both the town and to the police union. Like I said, that we really were looking for some significant language changes on this accumulation of time and what people would be paid out for and the long-term effects of it. So we did get that. Um and uh we worked collaboratively with the unions and it's, the contract is ending on July first. And I gotta tell you, there's not too many times where we've had the contract ready to go for the next few years. Police Department does an excellent job for us and you can see there's a lot of support for the officers and the people there. And I think this is, I would highly recommend that the council work uh the next three years.
Questions? All good, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
And nine, I make a motion to approve the attached, probably the tax.
Motion second. There's a list in front of you, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
Right?
Yes.
Make a motion to adjourn to executive session, discuss matters pertaining to the town uh to the town manager regarding performance evaluation. Uh attendance in the executive session shall be limited to members of town council and town management.
Second? All in favor? Opposed? We are back from, our executive session is nine forty-six.
I make a motion to amend the town manager's contract from July first, twenty twenty-five to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Alright, second.
Uh motion, I make a motion to increase the town manager's salary by three percent uh period of July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
Make a motion, uh the town manager will receive a one-time lump sum bonus of fifteen thousand dollars because of her exceptional performance exceeding her goals and objectives for this year.
Motion second, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes.
I make a motion for adjournment, to adjourn the June ninth, twenty twenty-five town council meeting.
Motion second, all in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. We are in adjournment at nine thirty-seven. Thank you very much.